Good evening. Due to the evolving situation with the COVID-19 novel coronavirus and health recommendations from the LA County Health Department, the public hearing regarding the La Crescent Avenue crosswalk removal and relocation will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the hearing. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. The meeting can be viewed on local cable, Charter Cable Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and also live streamed on the City of Glendale website project page. For public comments and questions during the hearing, please call 818-937-8100. My name is Yazdan Emrani. I'm the Director of Public Works for the City of Glendale, and I will now open the public hearing. First, we will have a short presentation and overview of this portion of the project that will be conducted by Mr. Sarkis Organision, Principal Civil Engineer with Public Works Department. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll be going over a brief presentation regarding the single crosswalk relocation and single crosswalk removal as part of the La Crescent Avenue rehabilitation project. On the screen, you'll see a project location map of the La Crescent Avenue rehabilitation project, which takes place between Norfolk Verdugo Road and Montrose Avenue. As part of this project, we will be modifying two traffic signals along the limits, one at Roseland Avenue and one at Shirley Jean Street. On this slide, we'll discuss the crosswalk removal that is proposed at the intersection of La Crescent Avenue and Roseland Avenue. As is common practice, the city is required to update existing crosswalks with ADA-compliant curb ramps when implementing traffic signal modification projects. However, the lack of a sidewalk on the west side of La Crescent at Roseland Avenue precludes the need for a crosswalk. No land use exists on the west side of La Crescent at Roseland that requires pedestrian access. The west side of La Crescent abuts the Verdugo Wash. Currently, you're viewing a plan view of the existing conditions at La Crescent Avenue and Roseland. On the south side is the existing crosswalk to be removed. After the project is complete, the proposed improvements will look like the image on your screen. There will be a brand-new, high-visibility zebra crosswalk installed crossing Roseland Avenue, and the crosswalk on the south side will be removed. Shifting to the La Crescent Avenue and Shirley Jean Street intersection, you'll also see that this existing crosswalk on the south side is being proposed to be relocated to the north side. Currently, there is a minimal amount of storage space for pedestrians on the southwest corner. There's also a conflict zone for left turns into Shirley Jean going northbound and into an existing driveway proceeding southbound. Furthermore, there's no curb ramp installed on the east side of the intersection where the existing crosswalk leads to, and should there be a curb ramp installed, it would be too close to the entrance of the nearby driveway. On your screen, you'll see a plan view of the existing crosswalk to be relocated from the south side. And now, this is a view of the proposed improvements after the project is complete. The crosswalk will be relocated from the south side to the north side, and it will be updated to high-visibility zebra crosswalks. Thank you, Mr. Organision. At this point, we will go through all the questions and comments that we received for the sidewalk removal and relocations, and I'm going to read them all to the record. The first question that we received was, "What is the motivation of removing the crosswalks, crosswalk at La Crescent Avenue and Roseland Avenue?" Second question was, "What is the motivation of relocating the crosswalk at La Crescent Avenue and Shirley Jean Street?" Question number three was, "Why can't we install sidewalk on Westerly La Crescent Avenue at Roseland Avenue?" Question number four is, "Are there any previous accidents that warranted for modifications to be made to both crosswalks?" Question number six was, or question number five, excuse me, was, "What is the reason/purpose of the existing crosswalk at La Crescent Avenue and Roseland Avenue that is being proposed to be removed?" And the last question we received was, "It seems that the relocation of the crosswalk will benefit the adjacent nursery more than it does for the residents at Oakmont Woods Neighborhood." So those were the questions and comments that we did receive, and at this point, we are opening the phone lines. Please call us at 818-937-8100 if you have any questions or comments regarding this project. Please note that we're only taking your comments and question at this point, and then we will compile all questions and comments and post, we will post on the city's website along with our responses later on this week. And again, this hearing is only to receive comments and questions of the two crosswalk relocations and removal for this project and has been advertised as such. We cannot discuss anything related to other elements of this project, including bike lanes. And finally, there will be a time limit of three minutes for each question. So with that, the phone lines are open. Oh, you're live for our public hearing. Go ahead.
I have a question when the time's appropriate.
Please, go ahead.
Yeah. This is Joe Beer from Oakmont Woods. Have you considered the volume, okay, I'm getting some feedback. Have you considered the volume of traffic that's leaving Oakmont Woods or entering Oakmont Woods? Most of that traffic is going to the north or coming from the north. With the new crosswalk configuration, all that, that traffic will cross the pedestrians' path, whereas now that traffic does not cross their path.
All right. Thank you.
Has there been a study to see what the volume of traffic is going north, coming from the north or going north compared to the traffic going south or coming from the south?
Right.
There hasn't been any rubber markers or any measurement of the traffic that I can see.
Yeah, thank you for your question. We, again, are only noting everybody's questions and comments, and then we will compile all these and provide the answers on the website. So thanks for calling in.
Well, let's see, I have some more questions.
Oh, go ahead.
The new configuration has, it looks like a center median on coming from the north as you're coming south. I guess to go into the nursery, you would enter the center median that has a broken stripe. Is that correct?
Again, we're not answering any of the questions. We're just taking the questions, and then all the answers will be posted later on this week.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, in your new configuration, it looks like you'll have to put a red curb on the west side of La Crescent Avenue in front of that one and maybe two homes. Have those homeowners been told that they will not be able to park cars on the street? They're normally two or three cars parked in that area, and in addition, the driveways are usually full of cars. So I think they'll have to park around the corner and will not be able to park in front of their house.
Okay.
And then, looking at your diagram, it appears that the crosswalk could remain where it is, and you could still, you still would de-conflict the left turn pockets. And all you'd have to do is put the ADA ramp on the east side, and that, there's no reason why that can't be near the driveway. So I don't see that this is a must-do kind of change.
Do you have any more questions or comments?
Yeah, well, yeah. Well, I really recommend that you do a traffic flow study there before you move the crosswalks into the path of the pedestrians. And I don't understand this comment that there's not room for pedestrians to, I guess, accumulate on the west side, to cross there. There's just as much room on the south side of Shirley Jean as there is on the north side. So I don't understand that argument either. But thank you for taking my comments.
Thank you for calling in.
Okay, sure. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, we're going to, we have Sarah on the line. Sarah, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Hi, you're live for our public hearing. Please go ahead.
Okay. There's somebody still talking.
If you could turn down the TV or your computer in the background so to reduce the feedback.
Okay. Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, should I go ahead with my question?
Yes, please do.
Yes, hi, my name is Sarah Gold. I'm a 30-plus-year resident of Oakmont Woods, and so I'm very familiar with that crosswalk in that area. I have two questions or concerns. The current crosswalk leads us right into a sidewalk at the south part of the bridge, which makes it safer. There's a lot of traffic going in and out of that neighborhood. So with the way the crosswalk is now, you do the crosswalk and you go right onto the sidewalk, and you have a safe place to walk. When you relocate that crosswalk, it goes into a curb, and there's no sidewalk on that north side of the bridge, and that concerns me. So I have a question about if that was considered. So that's my first question. And my second question kind of goes along with what Joe said about doing a flow. I have walked up and down Crescent Avenue many times, and people drive like much more than the 40 mile an hour speed limit. And with the crosswalk in the new place, I'm concerned about people being able to stop in time and hitting pedestrians. So I wondered, my question was, is that being taken in consideration? And I also agree with Joe about having placement, there being room placement as far as the ADA thing next to the nursery. So those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have Alec on the line. Alec, can you hear me? Alec, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, hello, staff. Pleasure to connect with you over the phone. This is Alec Barthosov. The question or comment that I had for city staff is, to the extent that you are, you guys are considering future developments or projects in the area, I know that the Verdugo Wash is a study corridor, and the city is now pursuing a project in this area. And to the extent that the Roseland crosswalk would serve that amenity and connect people from the community to that mixed-use path, I think is worth noting. So the crosswalk that's being eliminated, the additional curb ramps that would come with the crosswalk, if you were to pursue it as part of this project, I just wonder if that opportunity is lost and would cost additional funds later or would drag that project on later into the future, if that's a concern or not. So I'm hoping that's considered as part of the calculation you guys are making, because it might be something that will have to be added very soon. That's my comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we have Donald on the line. Donald, can you hear me?
Yes, this is Donald.
How are you?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes, I had a question or concern in regards to the Shirley Jean crosswalk. Is there going to be any consideration of putting a sidewalk on the wash side from the Shirley Jean exit at Oakmont Woods down to the Oakmont View Street that leads up to the homes up there? Because of the, I see a lot of people trying to cross the street, children and such, and there's no access to that side of the street for those residents up there. And I'd rather cross the street from that Oakmont View Luxon Avenue. That was my concern or question.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other additional questions or comments?
No, that was just it. Just wondering if they're going to do anything for those residents up there on Oakmont View.
All right. Thank you very much for calling in.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Bye.
Okay, again, the lines are open. If you'd like to make a comment or question, please call 818-937-8100. Okay, we have one caller. We have Sylvia. Sylvia, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I can hear you.
Please go ahead.
Yes, my name is Sylvia Masias. Thank you for taking our calls. I want to join my neighbors Sarah and Joe on the safety issue of cars traveling down from north to south on La Crescent. As it stands now, they have a stop before the crosswalk on the other side, and that, you know, provides a buffer. So we are very concerned about the traffic coming down from north to south and pedestrian safety, and that was my concern.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Bye-bye. Okay, we will wait a few minutes to see if there are any additional callers. Again, the phone number is 818-937-8100. And it looks like we have one more caller. We have John on the line. John, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you for taking my call. This is regarding that crosswalk relocation at La Crescent and Shirley Jean. We live up in the area, up in Oakmont Woods. We've been here for about 10 years now. The concern that we have is that if the crosswalk shifts further to the north on La Crescent, as some of the other callers have already commented, the vehicles do travel at a very high rate of speed, and normally where the crosswalk is now, as we cross, you can see how some of the cars kind of drift past the painted line where you're supposed to stop so you don't cross into the intersection. So our concern is that if we, if you guys move the crosswalk further north, now we're going to be in the crosswalk, but the cars don't quite make it, don't make that stop. So you're kind of, kind of putting us in harm's way a little bit if we, if you move that crosswalk to the north. That was our, that was my biggest concern.
All right. Well, thank you for calling in.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for taking my call.
Of course. And our next caller is Leonard. Leonard, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Leonard Cootin, lives for over 40 years. I would like to say that I need you definitely to review your idea about changing the crosswalk, moving it north rather than leaving it where it is in existence from Shirley Jean across to the La Crescent Nursery for the fact that, since I use it and watch it every day, the traffic that comes down, that heads down north going south, that many, many times, the traffic actually exceeds into the actual going into the lane of making a turn into the Oakmont Woods. So putting pedestrians closer to the traffic on the downhill would be a serious situation. I would like you to review that and listen to the other individuals who have concerns for this case. Thank you very much. Also, I would appreciate, this is a Democratic National Convention. It is a long time for you to, such a conference. I'm sorry, you must be Republicans. So, thank you.
Thank you for calling in.
Yeah.
Okay, we will wait a few more minutes to see if there's any additional callers. This is the public hearing for the La Crescent Avenue crosswalk removal and relocation. And again, if you're interested in making a comment or questions, please call 818-937-8100. Okay, we have, we have Alec on the line. Alec, can you hear me? Alec, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Sure. Sorry, just as a quick follow-up to address potentially some of the concerns brought up by other callers for safety at Shirley Jean, perhaps a design consideration could be to push the stop bar further north so that people are stopping much far in advance of the crosswalk pavement markings, hopefully to address that safety concern and create that additional buffer space for people who are wanting to cross the street. Thank you.
Thank you for calling. And we have Joseph on the line. Joseph, can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Hi, please go ahead.
Yeah, this is Joseph Beer again. I, maybe I missed it, but are there plans to have left turn arrows at this intersection, or would the traffic lights be similar to what's there right now?
We're notating your questions. Go ahead. Do you have any other questions or comments?
Okay, yeah, that's one. And then the other is just a comment. In the morning, sometimes on the Oakmont Woods Bridge, traffic will back up. There might be five or six cars there in the morning, people leaving Oakmont Woods. And with the new configuration, if there's somebody in the crosswalk, that traffic can't, since most of it, again, is going north, that traffic can't begin to flow until the crosswalk clears, and the person would have to be, pedestrian would have to be all the way across the street before the traffic can flow. And so it seems like the timing of the signal has to change to allow a longer period for the traffic to clear the bridge, but just an observation of the new configuration. But again, thank you very much for taking my comments.
Absolutely. Thank you for calling in. We will wait additional few minutes to see if there's anybody who wants to call in regarding this topic. Okay, this is the public hearing regarding the La Crescent Avenue crosswalk removal and relocation. And there is a number on your screen, which is 818-937-8100 if you'd like to call and make a comment or any questions that you have. We will be recording these and providing the answers at a later date. All right, so we're going to wait another couple of minutes. So we've had some great questions and comments that have been called in. And again, this is the public hearing regarding the La Crescent Avenue crosswalk removal and relocation. If you have any questions or comments regarding this project, please -- this portion of the project, I should say, please call 818-937-8100. While we're waiting for calls, if we can put the project contact information on the screen, we have two numbers for you, two folks that you can contact for any additional questions or comments. First one is Mr. Edward Hiti, who's the Assistant Director of Public Works and City Engineer. And you see his email address and his phone number. And also, Mr. Rostam Tavitian, who's the project manager. And Rostam's contact information is also shown on the screen. So it looks like we're not -- we don't have any more phone calls. So at this point, we will close the hearing and adjourn the public hearing at 7:01 PM on August 17, 2020. Thank you for everybody that called in with your comments and questions.